Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Thursday, April 3rd. This evening, we'll have a call to order with approval of minutes. And most importantly, we're going to start the evening with recognition for two of our members of our police department. We'll have a public hearing with National Grid. We'll also have a public hearing with Aquarian Water. And we'll have a public hearing with the Waymouth Department of Public Works, which will be a first for me. Then we'll have a discussion as a follow-up to a question raised by one of our citizens. We'll be talking about Bearcove Park Drive, some appointments, selectmen, town administrative reports. And then the advisory committee will join us approximately at a quarter of eight to discuss an article about the FOSS memorial proposal that the Board of Selectmen have put forth. And then, once that discussion is concluded, we'll have an executive session to discuss strategy with respect to real estate negotiations and negotiations with a non-union personnel contract. So with that being the case, on the minutes, are there any questions?
No, good.
The minutes are for March 20th, the regular session.
And March 11th.
And March 11th, too. Yep. All right, so Irma, why don't you do both?
Make a motion that we approve the minutes for March 11th, 2014, and March 20th, 2014.
Second. Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Keith, Chief Petty Officer.
Mr. Chairman, Keith German, 104 Kilby Street, also Director of Veteran Services for the Town of Hingham. It's my honor tonight to set forth two citations for, as you mentioned, members of our local police force. These citations or certificates of recognition are coming down from the Veterans Council from the Town of Hingham. So I will read why we're giving them, and then I'll read the full citation, and we'll have those members come up and receive them from Treasurer John Asher and Vice Chairman Bob Beal. So this first citation, "The Veterans Council Recognition Award: This Certificate of Appreciation is gratefully presented to Leslie Badger, Hingham Animal Control Officer, in recognition and sincere appreciation of outstanding service and assistance to a veteran in need which contributed to the advancement of the Hingham Veterans Council programs and activities dedicated to God and country." So ACO Badger was instrumental in the caring for a veteran's canine, his pet. This veteran had to be hospitalized at the VA down in Brockton. At the onset, this looked like to be a short stay, but upon further medical investigation, the doctor prescribed that long-term care was needed for that aging veteran. ACO Badger had been taking care of the animal herself for over five weeks, and then around the six-week, we found that out from the doctor, and we began looking for permanent placement of the dog, which was later achieved. All parties happy. The dog is in a safe and loving environment now, and the veteran, who no longer could care for the animal, was very grateful to Leslie for all she did. So if we could have her come up and receive her award.
Animal Control Officer Leslie Badger.
Congratulations. Leslie, how are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Wasn't explained, I think, in the reading of the citation. Keith may have gone to be saying it, but we have to make you all understand that Leslie did this, as Keith indicated, for a two- and three-day stay on her nickel. It turned into being almost a month and a half, and she continued to encumber the expense at her expense. She didn't come tell anyone, she simply did what she needed to do because that's what she does, that's what our people do here in town. And as a result of that, we, the Veterans Council, have assisted Leslie in putting together a fund to help people. People can donate to her to be able to help these kinds of situations, that contingency plans, and she should not be taking money out of her pocket to help and assist animals. So Leslie, this doesn't say it here, but we sincerely appreciate everything you do, have done, and have continued to do for our veterans.
Mr. Chairman, our second award of tonight, the Town of Hingham Veterans Council Recognition Award. This is to certify of appreciation and gratefully presented to Sergeant Stephen Durth, Hingham Police Officer, in recognition and sincere appreciation of outstanding service and assistance to a veteran which contributed to the advancement of the Hingham Veterans Council programs and activities dedicated to God and country. For those of you who may not know or had saw the story, Sergeant Durth was instrumental in making a positive change in a local veteran's life by thanking him for his service in Vietnam during a recent traffic stop. This made such an impact on the veteran's life that he wrote to our chief, Michael Perino, and subsequently was featured in a news story on WHGH Channel 7 last Veterans Day.
Sergeant Durth, it is my pleasure, on behalf of the Veterans Council, to present this certificate of appreciation for your assistance and outstanding service to a veteran of the town. Bravo, Zulu.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, thank you, Keith. On behalf of the board, let me extend our congratulations to both Leslie and Steve for the recognition so nobly deserved. And, you know, you guys do so many things for this town, and it's so nice of the Veterans Council to take the time out to give you recognition for one of those great things that you do. So we thank you and congratulate you, and I know, are you going to put them back to work tonight?
No, I'm going to get the rest of the night off.
What a heart.
That's not why they buy me dinner.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you both. Congratulations. The next part of our agenda is a public hearing at the request of National Grid to install and maintain 55 feet of 2-inch gas main on Main Street. And Dennis Regan is here, and I promised Dennis I wouldn't make comment on the work he's doing near my house. But that's all right, Susan, that's my wife, she'll reach out to you, I'm sure, at some point.
Sorry for your trouble.
No, not at all. He likes to get me up early, that's so I can start the town's business, that's the good news. Dennis, please proceed, thank you.
My name is Dennis Regan, and I'm the permit representative from National Grid. And tonight, National Grid hereby respectfully requests your consent to install and maintain approximately 55 feet, more or less, of 2-inch gas main in Mann Street, Hingham, from the existing 2-inch gas main near House Number Nine, easterly to House Number Five for a new gas service.
Anything you'd like to tell us what the work is, when are you going to do it, et cetera?
Well, the customer's interested in a gas service which is going to warrant extending the gas main, so we're going to have to apply to the Public Works Director for a street open permit. And at that time, the Public Works Director will decide at what time in the morning we should start, and what time in the evening, and how the heat job should be. This job looks like it will be two to three days, max.
I can never say you're not responsive, Dennis. That's very good. Harry, any comments on this?
No, no comments on this. It's a very small job, and two or three days, max, and we should be complete.
Neither of these roads were under any kind of a moratorium?
No, they were on the construction schedule for 2016, I believe.
Which actually thanked both you, Roger, and Randy, for reworking that construction schedule. Appreciate that.
Good point.
Yeah, Dennis, I actually don't have any questions. Do not fall over.
That's good.
Dog's next time.
There is.
In fact, let me just announce, since you mentioned it, Irma, that on April 17th, we'll be talking about the road scheduling work. Roger Fernandez will be back with us. Paul, any?
Is this on a grade?
Well, as you know, that whole area of Crow Point by the Yard Club has a grade. This isn't real steep. You come up from, like, the North Beach area, it's more than top of the hill, headed towards Summit Drive.
Any particular precautions or extra steps that need to be taken because of it?
No, I don't believe so. They're attaching this main to a main that was replaced, I want to say, about eight or nine years ago, so, you know, it's just going to be an extension of a plastic main that's already in place.
Okay. Any questions from the public? If they're being none, I'll entertain a motion, Irma, would you be so kind?
Make a motion to approve the request of National Grid to install and maintain approximately 55 feet of 2-inch gas main in Mann Street. This gas main will originate from the existing gas main at House Number Nine and continue under the paved surface of Mann Street for the entire length to completion at House Number Five. This gas main is needed to supply a new gas service to House Number Five. This approval is subject to the stipulation of the Department of Public Works, including letter dated February 26, 2014.
Second. Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, Dennis, thank you. Thank you, Harry. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing at the request of Aquarian Water Company to install and maintain 400 feet of new 12-inch diameter main in the old Derby Street area. Could you introduce yourself to the folks at home?
Good evening, Blake Lucas, Director of Operations for Aquarian Water Company. And I am here tonight requesting consent to install a water main on Old Derby Street. It will consist of approximately 400 linear feet of 12-inch ductile iron, cement line, water pipe, and one public fire hydrant, as approved by the Hingham Fire Department. The water main will be a continuation of an existing 8-inch water main located on Old Derby Street, and will be installed to provide water and fire suppression service to 141 Derby Street.
Harry, any comments, sir?
No comments at all.
Okay. So Paul, any?
Does this particular size main provide for the potential for further connections and hookups in that area in the future?
The size of the main was determined based on a fire flow test that was done.
By the need of the building that's going to be constructed?
Specifically for this building, yeah.
In the event that additional development goes in there, does that mean that a different sized main would have to be installed in the future?
I think that we would run an analysis and determine at that time whether or not we would need to increase the size, or whether this would be sufficient.
What size water line is this coming off of?
It's coming off of an 8-inch. So if there were any further development that required a larger size in this area, it would have to go further back.
So the water line on Derby Street's 8 inches?
The old Derby Street, correct.
What about the new Derby Street? What's the water line there?
I'm not sure, off the top of my head, what the size of the line is, but where it terminates is a lot further from the site than where this existing 8-inch is located.
Do you know the size of the water line on Derby Street, Harry?
No, I don't.
Is there a concern, Paul?
It's just a question, that's all, I'm just trying to anticipate.
I mean, I think it would be safe to assume it's probably 8-inch. Yeah, it's an 8-inch coming to Old Derby. I'm not 100% sure, but that's what my best estimate would be.
Okay. Irma?
Is this the Lexus dealership?
Correct, it is, yeah.
Okay, if there were further development beyond the Lexus dealership, let's say a smaller piece, and then another smaller piece, would you then go, how would you figure out the next piece to feed the water?
It would all be based on what the future development would be, and what the water usage would be, and what the demand for fire flow would be.
Now, you're replacing, or this is a new hydrant?
It's a new hydrant, correct.
Are there any along the way that you can replace while you're doing this?
Not within the area of construction, no.
No, good.
Okay, thank you. So I think what you're hearing here is a concern, we don't like to do work twice, so if there is some potential development before the work starts, or, you know, just advise us of that, so that we, I don't expect Harry would know if there were, but I don't expect that, but I think that's what you're hearing, the board.
When are you going to do this, excuse me? When are you going to do this?
I believe the anticipated timeline is to begin in June.
Okay, so if between now and June, something else pops up, you could react to it?
If we were approached, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Haley asks a question.
Is Bristol paying for this?
Correct, they are.
Okay. Any questions from the public? If they're being none, I'll entertain a motion, Mr. Haley.
That we approve the request of Aquarian Water Company to install and maintain approximately 400 feet of new 12-inch diameter cement line ductile iron water main, one public fire hydrant, and associated valves and fittings in Old Derby Street, Hingham. This new water main will originate from an existing 8-inch water main located adjacent to the parking lot at 160 Old Derby Street, and continue in an easterly direction to completion near the intersection with Derby Street. This main is being installed to provide water service to the property of 141 Old Derby Street. This approval is subject to the stipulation of the Department of Public Works, including letter dated February 25, 2014.
Second.
Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Blake.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is a request from the Waymouth Department of Public Works to install and maintain some main on Volusia Road and Wallaca Road.
I'm not the proponent for this project, however, if you've read through the description, this is going to replace the water main, the existing water main that comes from Waymouth that feeds Volusia Road and Wallaca Road in Hingham. So it's going to, you know, service the Hingham residents in that area, as well as an upgrade of three hydrants in that area to serve both the Hingham residents and the Waymouth residents. Any questions? I might try to ask them on behalf of the Town of Waymouth.
I'm sorry, Harry.
If there's any questions, maybe I can answer them, but, you know.
They don't like to come to Hingham, or their pass barns aren't current?
They're not allowed.
I assume they got an invitation.
They did.
They did.
Couple of quick ones. Is this going to be a Waymouth PD, Hingham PD detail sharing job, or?
I'm not sure. The Hingham section, they're obligated to contact the Hingham Police Department to see, you know, they'll work out the details, the police department themselves.
Are we talking like a 20-inch trench in the roadway here, or are we talking, you know?
Yeah, you'd probably see, you know, two and a half feet wide water main that goes down below the frost line, so you're talking, you know, four foot plus deep trench.
Is that Waymouth?
Are you here from Waymouth?
Yes.
There you go. Saved. Timing is everything.
Come on down, as they say on the TV show, just sit next to Harry Sylvester. If you have something you'd like to put up, that's the place to put it, yeah.
I just want to add that the water main they have in the ground now, currently, it's, I mean, it's quite aged, and there have been several leaks up there, so it is a need for replacement.
How old is it, Harry?
I don't know the age of it, but I know there's a number of trenches that have been put in the ground that are pail with leaks.
Would you be so kind to introduce yourself through the microphone?
I apologize, I thought it was at 7:30. I'm Steve Olson, I'm a senior project manager with the Waymouth Partners Group, working on behalf of the Town of Waymouth.
Okay.
And they have some water customers that are residents of Hingham.
Okay.
And they're proposing to replace the 2-inch main on Volusia and Wallaca. And I brought a plan showing the location on the board.
Okay.
Is this the portion of Hingham that's served not by Aquarian?
Yes.
The hydrants, are they, are any of those leaking hydrants?
Not that I'm aware of.
Good answer.
There's no hydrants in Hingham on this portion of the main.
There isn't.
Because at the town line with Waymouth, that's where the 6-inch main stops and the 2-inch main starts, so there's no hydrants on the 2-inch main.
So the three hydrants that are replaced during Waymouth?
We're going to, new hydrants.
Oh, new, okay. Hingham or Waymouth?
In Hingham, and there are no hydrants there now.
Excellent. That is excellent. I'm good.
Good, okay. Paul?
No, no, thanks very much.
Okay, thank you.
For the improvement.
Any questions from the public? Okay, do you know when you'll start this work?
They are going to bid it in two weeks, and construction will probably start a month after that. There's many, there's six or seven streets within the project's scope of work. I don't know when this will be done, but I presume it will be this summer.
Summertime.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the Town of Waymouth will be passing out flyers probably a week in advance of the construction activities. They won't know the schedule until the contractor is on board and submits his schedule.
Could you maybe get those notices to the Selectmen's Office so that they could be posted somewhere where our folks could see? Because it sounds like it's going to be a bumpy summer.
Yes. Good point.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions from the public? If they're being none, Irma, would you be so kind? Yes, excuse me, yeah. Come on up.
I actually have a question about the agenda. We received a note that the sewer project for Ship and Cottage was going to be discussed tonight by evening.
Okay, can you let us finish this vote, and I'll address that question for you? Thank you.
Hey, I'm going to make a motion to approve the request of the Waymouth Department of Public Works to install and maintain approximately 850 feet of new 6-inch ductile iron water main in Volusia Road and Wallaca Road. This proposed main will originate at the intersection of Volusia Road and Swanee Road, and then proceed under the paved surface for approximately 550 feet to the intersection with Wallaca Road. Then continue to Wallaca Road for its entire length of approximately 300 feet to completion at the intersection with Manatee Road. Three hydrants will also be replaced as part of this project. This new 6-inch main will replace an existing 2-inch main and will provide adequate fire flows in the area to service both Hingham and Waymouth residents. This approval is subject to the stipulation of the Department of Public Works, including letter dated March 13, 2014.
Second. Any further discussion?
Should the hydrants say new? They're not replacements.
Yeah, that's probably my error.
Oops.
Is that a oops, Harry?
That's an oops.
All right, so let us modify the motion. Sharon?
Three new hydrants will also be placed.
Some more.
Okay. Thank you, Irma, thanks for picking that up. Okay. There being no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry for the tardiness.
No, that's okay.
You can stand in the corner for five minutes. You can stand, Harry. Thank you, Harry. Is there anything else? Harry, you going to state for Roger?
Well, Roger's.
Okay. The next item, and it's an item that's been asked by one of our citizens, has to do with Bearcove Park Drive and the layout on Bearcove Park Drive, and our town engineer, Roger Fernandez, will come up and give us a lay of the land, so to speak.
So speaking.
Oh, there I did it again.
You did it. I think you got a mental block on this.
I got a mental block. I apologize to the folks who are here from Ship and Cottage. There's been a development that would cause us to delay the discussion of that at this time, so there will be no action taken this evening pending the resolution of those issues that have come to our attention. It was yesterday. Petty? It was yesterday. I'm sorry, we didn't get the notice out. Yes, sir?
William Sellers, 11 Ship Street.
You have to, could you come to the microphone? They can't hear you.
William Sellers, 11 Ship Street. My understanding is that the project is to supposedly break ground on April 15th. Would you be able to share any of the delays or issues that have arise?
I don't know that it's going to start on April 15th. I don't know where you heard that. We have not voted that.
From Watson, the engineering company, I believe.
You aware of that?
At the pre-construction meeting, it was held last week, April 15th was mentioned for a starting date.
Okay. Well, the board was not aware of that till just now, okay.
Can we address what the delays may be? Is that something that could be shared? We've been waiting for a very long time for the project to be approved and begin, so...
There are some procedural issues and legal questions that have to be addressed, and that's...
When will residents that live on Ship and Cottage be notified of those?
We haven't anything from the Sewer Commission at this point.
Yeah, we're waiting to hear on Sewer, so...
So should we reach out to the Sewer Commission for those questions?
I will get to the Sewer Commission tomorrow if you want to call. We're in the office till 1 o'clock tomorrow. I will try and get you some answers. Okay? Your name?
Sorry.
William Sellers, 11 Ship Street.
Okay, thank you. Okay, sorry. Okay. All right. Yeah, I am ready, Mr. Fernandez, if you would.
Would you, I know there's two topics on the table, one that was a concern that was raised by a resident, the other, the actual vote to lay out the road, how should I proceed? Would you like me to talk about the...
Why don't you do the road first? Is that easier?
Issues on the road?
Or, yeah, do that one first, if you want.
Okay, I'll grab the plans behind me in just one moment, but if I understand the concerns correctly, there were two on Bearcove Park Drive. One consisted of concern that there was flooding at the back of a property located at the bottom of Hillside Terrace that was a result of the DPW project. When I say DPW project, I mean the actual construction of the DPW complex itself. That project was completed in July of 2009, and so that was one concern, and then the other concern, and, excuse me, whether or not the project itself contributed to the flooding or the water at the back of this property on, again, Hillside Terrace. Did I say Hillside Drive? I'm sorry, Hillside Terrace. The other issue was a spillway or waterway that discharges road runoff into an ACEC, an area of critical environmental concern, an area that is also abuts Bearcove Park Drive, and whether or not, again, the project 2009 contributed to some additional flow going into that location, as I understand that those are the concerns. So if you would bear with me one second, I just, it might be helpful if I actually just hold these, if that's okay? Is that okay with the camera?
Bob, can you say that? Okay?
Oh, maybe, yeah, maybe Harry can actually hold this. So, I'll just take this bottom thing off here, this one little bit.
Roger, can you maybe walk the audience at home through what we're looking at?
Sure.
Like from...
On the roadblock stuff. Yeah, sure, absolutely. So what we're looking at is the access road, Bearcove Park Drive, the one that's up for acceptance. This is Ford Hill Street. This is the old Credit Union Bank, currently maintained and sort of occupied by the school department. And, again, the access road, and if you want to head up to the DPW, you would just take that right. The location where there's concern about flooding is right outside the roadway itself. So what you're looking at now is two things. It's an overlay of the proposed grading and the existing grading. So you have a topography here with contour lines, so each one of these squiggly lines, and I know it's difficult to see, but each one of these squiggly lines represents a grade change. So as you head this way, you can see that number 25, the next line over becomes 24, 23, 22, and 21, and those numbers, again, represent an elevation. This was the condition of the road before any work was done, so there was always a drop-off at that location.
My benefit, is that by design in those days when they built this?
Well, it's a good question. I mean, basically, I think what probably happened here is the Navy, during the war effort, they worked very expeditiously. So in my mind, they might have just blown a road in, to be perfectly candid. I mean, a lot of the stuff we uncovered on the site functioned, but it wasn't really built, I don't want to say it wasn't built to last, it was built to last, but it wasn't built to our current standards. They had bigger things on their mind.
Not to 50 years, no.
Not to 50 years, right.
Right.
So those are the existing grades, and this number 26, the elevation of the catch base in 24, those... 24, those are the new grades. So actually, in this section of the road, there was almost no grade change whatsoever. As you continue up the road, up, starting about at the access road to the DPW, and further up, there was a large grade change. I mean, we filled approximately six or seven feet bringing the road up. We did. But that's well outside the area of concern. In addition to that, none of this water runs off of the road. They all run into catch basin. There's a berm on both sides. The water does not run off the road. So I think I have another plan. I might actually illustrate this a little better, but I think in short, the, here we go again. Move this up a little bit. So again, here in red is the existing grades, and these numbers here represent the, I'm sorry, the pre-construction grades, and these numbers here represent the existing grades, and you will see that there was very little grade change on that roadway itself. This actual concrete foundation was one that was there before we started demolition and work on the site. That's a building that was there owned by the Navy, and that's still there. The concrete retaining wall, that was there, that's gone. So there was no change in the road grades. In addition to that, you'll see that there was no delineated drainage. So a survey went out to the site and actually physically surveyed all these features, and if there was a drain pipe or something else, that would have gotten picked up and shown on the drawings.
Roger, before you flip again, can you show where Thomas Auto Body is?
Yes, ma'am. So Thomas Auto Body is right about here.
Thanks.
You bet. The last thing I wanted to show you as relates to this one particular area, and hopefully, I think it's on this other one here, if you want to put this one in front. This is a map of, map supplied to you by the Conservation Commission's office. It's a GIS map, and basically it shows resource areas. Resource areas being wetlands, ACECs, all these infernal pools, all those are considered resource areas. But in this case, we're looking at a wetland. This map was, this location was delineated long before the start of the project. And the area in green designates a wetland area. So the location where we have water, had water. It was water before the project ever started, and in the next drawing, I'll show you a next...
Isolated wetland?
Isolated wetland, exactly. And here it is again. This drawing was actually submitted as part of a request for determination of applicability as part of the DPW's work. Randy only took this job, and this was shown to them. And again, an isolated wetland is at that same location in question. So I submit that at that location, there's, you know, there's always been water. What is interesting, I know in the interest of time, I'll try to be brief, Randy and his guys went out there and they did uncover a catch basin. There's a catch basin that they actually replaced, fixed as best they could, and they did locate a pipe. The pipe did not run under the road. The pipe that's there actually runs parallel to the road. Now, the pipe that's there, again, was put in when the Navy, you know, underwent their site development. I don't know when, I don't know the condition, I couldn't tell you any of that. All I know, all we do know is that it runs, again, parallel to the road.
Discovered that pipe when its existence?
Actually, recently, in the last six months.
Yeah, about six months.
Six or seven months.
So it wasn't delineated on any maps or anything prior to that?
No, sir. And it's to be expected, something that old, it was covered with debris and leaves. The intent originally was maybe just to go ahead and put a dry basin or a leaching basin at the location potentially, and then all of a sudden, oops, here's this thing. So it would never have made sense to sort of run a pipe parallel to the road and run a pipe under the road. And it began, you know, I was at this thing for a long time, there was never a pipe under the road.
Does it tie into anything on Fort Hill Street?
That's the million-dollar question, to be candid. That is the million-dollar question. We don't know.
No scoping possible?
That's also a question. That is, that's something that...
Roger, is that, that's the area that I got involved with the resident, and then I will look back at my old notes from the DPW project, and the, according to the resident, and then Randy was, and his guys were really good about helping here, there always had been some water in the spring.
Correct.
But what has transpired, and I know, in fact, I went by there knowing you were going to be here, and it is wet now.
Absolutely.
Because it's theoretically, it's spring. Don't break out your spring clothes yet. But it is considerably more wet, and then when I got involved last year, I think it was late summer because the mosquitoes were still very healthy, there was huge amounts of water there. And I think Randy tried to fix it, and is that what you're talking about, finding the pipe?
Exactly.
So I think it was last, late summer, early fall, maybe?
Okay, so even more than, probably six months ago.
Yeah.
I'm going to just shed a little light on this whole issue. Back in the 80s, I spent probably a week's worth of time, especially on the old, you know, Bear Cove Park Drive, investigating that drainage system. The resident, Mr. Burns, who lived at the house, was complaining about it, said it wasn't flowing like it used to. I opened up every manhole, every catch basin, I did some test holes, there was no pipe coming from that wetland into the drainage system that was built by the Navy. I couldn't find anything. We searched high and low, we ran rods, every single manhole cover we saw, we popped up, every catch basin. Speaking of Mr. Burns' son, who's the occupant of that home now, he said, "There's always been a pipe there with a grate on it, and it's pointed to go underneath the road." Well, Randy went in, we sent rods in there, we could only go like four feet off that pipe, and he hit solid. And this was probably over a year ago. And once that was the finding of our, you know, testing the line, the rods were going straight underneath the road, but they didn't reach the road. They stopped shore of the road. Once they excavated about six months ago to find out where this pipe was going, we found a structure that was on the shoulder of the road with a pipe going peril to the road. This is the first time we've ever realized the water was going peril to the road. We had no idea where it was going prior to that. There was a manhole down closer to Thomas's that runs out into Fort Hill Street and runs eventually into the Brook, by the country club driveway. Now, that portion of the drainage product is working fine, because all the basins that drain behind the old Credit Union, which this little school is running now, the bus headquarters drains in that direction and runs out. So there's going to be a blockage somewhere from where this pipe enters behind Mr. Burns' house in this manhole down by Thomas's Auto Body. That's, you know, my suspicion. And there was all overgrown for years and years. It could be roots in the pipe. Thomas has now cut a driveway through, accessing the river's property since the new road was built. He could have crushed the pipe.
What kind of pipe?
I believe it's a non-reinforced concrete pipe. There could be an old Orangeburg clay pipe, which both doesn't stand up to a lot of strength.
The clay?
So, I mean, there's still some, you know, it's a big stretch of, you know, length of pipe. Usually you don't want to put a pipe at every 150 feet. This runs probably 400 feet, so it's hard to really investigate it with, you know, a rod machine only carries about 160 feet on it. So you can't even get, if you work both ends, you really can't get to the middle. So, I mean, there's still some work to do out there. It's certainly not pressing.
So when does it flood? Do we have records as to the flooding condition?
I'm not sure if it's at the elevation where it starts to flood. It's above that elevation. I haven't gone out and physically checked it prior to coming here tonight, but, you know, Randy and Mr. Mullin are aware of it, and they're going to take some action, I believe.
Okay. Just for clarification, you have a catch basin on that side of the roadway that drains out into this isolated wetland presently?
Catch basin on that side of the roadway? We don't have any, no new catch basins run on the roadway for any of that. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. None of our drainage structures run into that location.
Okay.
At all, zero.
Okay.
Yeah. So the difficult aspect of this thing is, so we have an existing condition, some of which we believe could be on private property, that was put in by, you know, someone else, obviously the Navy, but, and the condition of that is not an easy sort of remedy. So we did try to help, at least Randy did, and Mike did, certainly Mullin, try to help Mr. Burns by replacing that catch base to see if that would help alleviate that. But the question becomes, if that is a drain system that would be considered more of a private issue than a public issue, we would need some direction as to what kind of, you know, efforts you guys would want to see us put in to remedy this thing, you know?
Have you got any kind of advisory out of CONCOM on this?
The only thing that I know Randy did with CONCOM was, if it's a, if it's an existing pipe and an existing structure, we have the right statutory to go in and maintain and improve, improve it if it's not working properly. So they've come back with a negative determination allowing Randy to do that work.
Okay.
So I don't see that as a potential issue. The issue is, do you, what kind of resources you guys feel we need to put into fixing this? It's kind of a private drainage. They rebuilt the structure around the existing pipe. That's part of the problem. What is really kind of odd is that the plans that we had of the depot were very thorough. They included all the drainage within the project, and they, it had to be an ASBIL plan because they were all in the locations that they were at. There is no record at all of this pipe coming in or this existing pipe.
You know, my research suggests that there are a number of other locations within Bear Cove Park where the Navy may have done other construction. And we haven't, you know, they didn't do records then, as we do today. So this could be a huge undertaking. This is different. This is a main entrance, and we need to address the problem if we can, yeah.
If I may, one of the issues, because this sounds like an undocumented feature for Microsoft, some work done by the Navy. The issue is, the man that lived there, the family that's lived there, has lived there for like two generations. And when I first saw it, he really, a good part of his backyard was like swamp. I thought it was back at home in Florida. And that's gotten worse, and I remember this being talked about at the DPW project.
Okay.
Well, that's where I went back to get my original notes on the two drainage issues that I remembered. So I think it's more, it's always been wet, but it's like having a small wet spot in your backyard where now you've got a swamp. And that's the difference. But I do appreciate the work that Randy and Mullie did to try and fix it. The question is now, what do we do?
What's special about this particular issue is, the wetland is on private property, and the water is being generated on private property. The town's not contributing to this wetland.
But it's coming from somewhere.
Well, the property that, you know, all the private property surrounding it.
It's a bowl. It's a, it's a bowl.
It's a, yeah, adequately, it's a bowl, and we, and this is not the first occasion where we've dealt with this type of issue, where people live in an area that was depressed from a contour standpoint, so what do we do?
Does it go into the roadway?
It does not.
Okay. So the solution, what I'm hearing you say is, you've got to do a little more exploratory work to see if you can...
Well, I will go, I will say that chances are, and I agree with Harry, that the pipe that's there is likely damaged. It would be, I think, a miracle if we were able to rot, give it a distance to clean it and rot it.
How deep?
At that location...
It's probably three and a half, four feet.
Can you use the cameras the sewer guys use? Those are pretty cool.
Sounds like the pipe's collapsed.
Yeah. But if you don't know that, until you send the little scooter in to take pictures.
I mean, we can tackle this as comprehensively as you guys think we need to, and the question is whether or not, you know, you want us to put the resources in to do that, which could include, you know, camering the pipe.
What does the homeowner think?
He's actually a really nice guy.
I thought he was great when I met him.
He's got a really good sense of humor, too, as a foreman.
Got a great garden in the summer.
And I think he's looking for something that's reasonable, but that's somewhat subjective, I guess.
So what you're looking for from us is, we want to, I think, before we spend a pile of money, I'd like to get an estimate as to what it's going to cost us.
Okay, yeah.
And if you can get to the issue, as Irma suggests, through the little camera guy, that might be the first effort, and then you can see how extensive the issue might be.
Looks like a little roller skate. It's really cute.
Yeah, no, no. Would this be an unprecedented repair?
I don't recall us ever doing something like this before. Do you ever have that experience? Well, this is highly unique. It appears that the pipe that's from below the road probably falls into the town layout or the new town layout, if it's voted on tonight. The pipe that's entering the system is coming from private property, and there's no easement in place. I mean, it's very unique. So, you know, I mean, it's tough to really comment on past practice. What we've had is, we've provided people a way to fix their own drainage at their expense. We've had situations where we've said, "This is how you can, we can help you," but they've been the ones who sort of undertook the cost of doing that.
Okay, so it sounds like you've got some more work to do. You need to define the problem more specifically so we can decide what the next course of action would be, and the impact if we don't. I mean, that's the other side of this. You know, there could, what's the impact if we don't address the issue?
I think, could you possibly check with the health department? Because I believe they were out there several times last year checking on the mosquitoes. Because a couple times I was out there, they're like Alaska-sized mosquitoes there. So that, to me, would be a concern, that if the swamp is such that it's a nice mosquito breeding place, maybe we should get a little bit more interest in it.
Well, the pipe that's in there, it is at a certain grade, so it's going to remain a wetland. How much water's going to be in there, you know, it's hard to judge by just visually looking at it. I mean, it builds up the pipe, then it drains out, and then what's below it's days ago.
Mr. Hershey, you raised the question, does this get towards your issue?
No, it doesn't at all. I'm very upset because nothing's changed. You have an old DPW, and you move it over here, and you do the same thing as you did on the old DPW. You don't respect the neighbors, okay? And I'm very upset about this, okay? How come I have the plans in place that show the pipe, and it discharges over there by the new skate park, and you people don't have it? Okay? Why wasn't this looked at when the road was built?
Excuse me, Mr. Hershey, talk to the board.
Okay. Why wasn't this looked at?
I have no idea. We'll find that out.
Okay. Well, let me just show you, Bob, take a look at this picture. This is what it looks like at the last rainstorm we just had, okay? This is unacceptable. This was never this bad before. I lived in town for 65 years, okay? This is disrespectful to the neighbors. And when this guy first complained, okay, these people that are involved were very disrespectful to him, okay? I got the whole nine, yeah. Now he's got rats in his backyard. He's told me this, and now this stuff smells.
Does he mention any of this, Roger?
Now this stuff smells, okay?
I have not heard that.
And also, and also, when you do discharge it, okay, is there going to be clean water where it's going to discharge, where it's going to go to? You have an auto body shop that's been there for 70 years, right after World War II, okay? That's never been checked for pollutions, pollution, okay?
I don't know that.
And the Conservation had a problem with that there, and they never asked for a test in the soil. And that's not...
Get another picture?
In line. And I really want to follow up on this issue, because we have the...
Yeah, we've got, you've raised, you raised a good question, and I commit...
I love a challenge, okay? The last time I was here discussing this was about two weeks ago or so.
Two weeks ago.
It was the picture of the road down there. Bob, can you take a look at that picture? The picture of the road. And this gentleman here said that, "Well, you know, it's really not too bad in a light room."
Wait, wait a minute. We're not going to get personal in this, so...
Well, it was discussed that...
Mr. Hershey, Mr. Hershey, I've got a name. My name is Roger Fernandez, so if...
Well, I don't respect you, so I'm not going to tell you.
Then sit down.
Come on.
Mr. Hershey, you're excused.
I made my point, thank you.
Why don't you give, why don't you give Roger the two pictures? I'm sorry.
I don't, I don't very want to. So I could, I'd like to quickly address that one location, Mr. Bob. So again, you have the other...
That's okay, Roger, we...
Do you want me to point the elevation? If you think in the interest of time, it doesn't make sense, I will.
I'm good on it. Yeah, if you want to make a quick point.
Just, I just wanted to show you the other location. Again, it took a plan, overlay the existing conditions. This is the location in question. These elevations are the elevations that were there before. This is an ASBIL. It was 24. It is still 24.
Okay. Okay. All right. Can you go through the Bearcove Park Drive?
So the plan that we have behind us, the same plan I presented to you a couple of weeks ago, asking for the board to consider laying out the Bearcove Park Drive. Bearcove Park Drive being already a town way, just has not been formally accepted. And our recommendation is that the board lay out the road, folks, for final acceptance.
Okay. Questions, Irma?
Nope.
None.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
That the Board of Selectmen hereby order the layout of said Bearcove Park Drive as noticed in the intention to lay out as a public way the street known as Bearcove Park Drive, as shown on a plan entitled Town of Hingham Bearcove Park Drive, Hingham, Mass. 02043, roadway acceptance plan, prepared by CHA Consulting, Inc., dated February 5, 2014, and endorsed on March 14, 2014, which having been posted in a public place not less than seven days prior to the date of this public meeting in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 79, Section 5, and Chapter 82, Section 22.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much. Bill, could you just tell Advisory we're ready?
They're going to be here?
Yeah, they're going to come in here. Yes, thank you. I appreciate that. We have a warrant. We have the warrant for this year's town meeting and we need a vote to sign it. Let's see, Irma?
With pleasure.
Okay. Make a motion. It's on the vote list there.
Make a motion to sign the warrant for the 2014 annual town meeting.
Second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We have some people coming in from our Advisory Committee. And I'll just take a minute as soon as they assemble. You've got the good chair. Okay. Now, look at that. They all sit together. That's good. That's good.
I like the bow tie. Look at this.
Okay. At the request of the press, there's been some background that I think would be appropriate, particularly for the folks at home. Two years ago, the Board of Selectmen put together a committee to seek a way to honor Seaman Herbert Foss, at the time recognized as our only Medal of Honor winner. And it was suggested to us and encouraged, the encouragement we received at the time, and I was the only member who was here at that time, by Representative Garrett Bradley and Senator Robert Hedlund. That's when I lived, by the way, still, in Garrett Bradley's district until, before they relocated me. To put together, and is there some appropriate, what would be an appropriate way to honor Seaman Foss, who in 1898 was awarded his Medal of Honor? The suggestion, the committee researched the issue to some degree, and again focusing exclusively on Seaman Foss. That was their charge. It took a number, year and a half, to research a variety of different proposals and check with the current occupants or other occupants who might be interested in looking at the best way to honor Seaman Foss. And the proposals that were put forth created some discussion by people who felt was the location, the right location, was the honor, the appropriate honor. And quite frankly, the Town of Hingham was being compared to other towns, particularly Weymouth, where they have named all of their high schools after their five, or high schools and grade schools after their five Medal of Honor winners. So what was, the real question was, what was appropriate? Late last year, the issue came up that there may be, may be other recipients of the Medal of Honor who may have lived in the Town of Hingham. There was one name, General Blackmer, who married a brewer here in town, and he received the Medal of Honor. He ultimately became a general in the Grand Army of the Republic and one of its first leaders, as I recall. And should he be honored as well? That raised issue was not the charge of the Foss Committee that we established as a Board of Selectmen. But the issue was a good question. And what we tried to do is, maybe we should go back and take another look and see, is there another way to deal with the issue of honoring Seaman Foss and potentially honoring what may have been other residents of the town? I can tell you that one of the, the funny part about this, I always open a can of worms and you can guarantee something will pop out. One of the members that was recommended, suggested to us, that had been a Medal of Honor winner who lived in Hingham, he was temporarily assigned here, but he is a resident of Milton. And the Town of Milton sent an email to us saying, "Hands off. He's ours." So, but it was clear that while we know Foss, no question that Foss resided here in town, and that he worked for the Fort Hill Cemetery and is buried there, and we have had conducted, since I've been a Selectman, every year on his birthday, we go there to remember him. So that's for sure. The subsequent question that came up is, are there others and should there be a way to honor them? We got good input, and I see Bob Curley in the audience. We got good input from the Historic Commission and some questions that they wanted answered, which we have recognized and we want addressed. So I took the, in the interest of time here, I took the opportunity to meet with the chairman of the Advisory Committee, who is to my left, Greg McKeon, and the Secretary of the Advisory Committee, Tom Piles. And we spent a morning saying, how do we handle this? And what's the best way to proceed? Our purpose was to honor Foss. We still want to honor Foss. This board has voted to do that on a couple of occasions. The second question, though, was, are there others? And so what we put together is, and what we'll discuss tonight, is, is there a way that could get Foss, move forward on the Foss issue and get that project started and then deal subsequently with the issue of the other potential members that there might be who have lived here in the Town of Hingham? And it raised another question for me personally, and that is, I know one of the General Blackmer himself, his death notice, I'm told, said he died here in Hingham. I'm also told by the Veterans Agent that he's buried in Boston and they haven't recognized him. So that kind of questions about, it's certainly no disservice on anybody's part for any of those four people to not memorialize them wherever. And if it should be Hingham, that's a subsequent discussion. But I think the question then is, how do we get both the issues forward? And let's start with the process of dealing with Seaman Foss. Because of all the confusion over this, I personally, and I do mean this personally, I'm concerned that the Town of Hingham, let's move forward. The man has been dead since 1937. His act was committed 116 years ago. There are a number of people whom we all honor in this town. I hope we don't wait as long to recognize them. Of course, you all know who I'm talking about, but they tell me they're not in a hurry to leave us yet, so that's one of the qualifications, I suspect. But the issue is, let us try to figure a way, can we move forward honoring Seaman Foss, knowing full well that we have other, potentially, potentially others that may need recognition? So that's the discussion for tonight. Tom Piles, as the Secretary, put forth, well, we put forth, the Board of Selectmen put forth a warrant article. And the warrant article designates an idea to create a park down at the waterfront as a location for certainly Seaman Foss and then the others. And the comment then addresses some of the other questions that have come up in the discussion that I think is why we've asked Advisory, in the interest of time, that to move this forward, we need to do it as a supplemental article sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. And we need the input of Advisory to decide how we should proceed. So with that, a few minutes of opening, I don't know if the Chairman of Advisory or the Secretary would have any comment?
I have nothing to add to what you said, Bruce. Thank you.
And you said everything.
Tom wants to go home.
I want to go home. I'm going to be, I'm Tom Piles...
You'll excuse me if I leave.
Residing at 727 Main Street, and I am here as Secretary of the Advisory Committee. And I'm going to ask some indulgence because much of the things that I prepared are things that Bruce has already covered, but just because I can't get off track, I better say I'm. For the viewing public, just a little history, Herbert L. Foss was a recipient of the Congressional Medal of Honor. He served the nation during the Spanish-American War, and he settled in Hingham after the war. And for a period of time, he was employed at the ammunition dump and later was appointed the Superintendent of Fort Hill Cemetery, where he is buried. For some years, Mr. Foss's descendants, the vets, the town officials and others have celebrated his birthday at a graveside service every October, I believe it is. And many in town have felt that the town should recognize Mr. Foss in a more grand manner. Two years ago, indeed, the Board of Selectmen appointed the Foss Memorial Committee to develop a plan to commemorate Mr. Foss with a memorial to be located at the harbor. With the endorsement from the Board of Selectmen, the Foss Memorial Committee is now prepared to move forward and will be vetting the memorial at appropriate town permitting commissions and boards. This article is an appropriation article strictly for funding the advances of the process and design, and process of designing and permitting of the memorial. The Board of Selectmen and the Advisory Committee has had, held several hearings on this effort over the past couple of months. And I believe that the Board of Selectmen have truly listened to the concerns of the Advisory Committee, of the Historical Commission, and citizens at large in putting forth the amended article before us now. The Board of Selectmen has designated town parcels between Whitney Wharf and Barnes Wharf for the Medal of Honor Memorial Park. And I want to emphasize that. It's the Medal of Honor Memorial Park. It is not the naming of a park for anyone. The park will be available for the construction of the memorial for Mr. Foss and other recipients of Medal of Honor that are deemed appropriate for that spot. The Board of Selectmen, with the advice of the Foss Committee, will be responsible for developing criteria for such future memorials. The article is considered to be framing of issues of several concerns. As Bruce said, we really tried to alleviate some of the concerns. Obviously, you're not going to be able to satisfy everybody, but I think it is doing a balancing act of what the concerns were that were expressed by the Historical Commission, the Advisory Committee and citizens. This is not a naming article. I want to emphasize that. This is strictly an appropriation article. And what it seeks to accomplish is to locate, specifically locate, as was missing from previous discussions, the park at a portion of the waterfront. And these are Board of Selectmen parcels. The park is designated to all of Medal of Honor recipients. It will be there for not only Mr. Foss, but other recipients as deemed appropriate. That doesn't mean that there isn't a lot of work to be done. There is. The vetting of the memorial will go through the appropriate boards and commissions, but this is just another step in the process. I think that several of us on the Advisory Committee feel that we truly need to honor a brave hero of Hingham. And we feel it's time to come together as a town and move forward with this article.
Bruce, do you want to add anything, Greg?
No, I think that you summed it up well, Tom. I'm just following what you and Bruce have said. I think what's important here is, we have heard the concerns of the people who have had some issues with the proposals that have come forth. I think what we've reached, I wouldn't even really call it a compromise, because I think it sort of came out of it, came out of the process as almost a unique solution, which is to identify, as you say, a park that isn't specific to any one honoree, but does provide an opportunity for Mr. Foss and as appropriate others to get the singular recognition that they warrant. And for me, I think this is certainly responsive to what my concerns would be, and I'm fully supportive of it.
Before I open it up, Mary, did you have anything, Jan? Okay. One other thing, just to make you, this has caught town, the town interest. Today I was interviewed by WATD. So while we're here at 8 o'clock, it's on. So on this question. And the issue was, what are you doing? Why are you doing it? And I explained, the purpose here tonight was not just to honor Seaman Foss, which was our original intent, but also to have a process in place that would permit us to honor others if they were so found out to be. So with that, I know, Irma, do you have any?
I have a couple of questions. Thank you for all your hard work. And Tom, you indicated this is not a naming article, but yet there's a name in here, which the first time I had seen the Medal of Honor Memorial Park was a couple of weeks ago when this was put before us. Can you talk about how this concept came up? And this is a naming, right? Because it doesn't exist today.
Well, short answer to your question is yes. It is a naming, but I think what Tom's point was, if you look at the naming bylaw that we put in place a few years ago, A, I think that most people think of that in the context of naming something after an individual, which this purposely does not do. In addition, I think the bylaw, and somebody can correct me if I have this somewhat wrong, allows for the Selectmen to name a portion of a piece of property or a building without going through the naming...
Procedure.
Procedures, thank you, Paul, that are outlined in the bylaw that we passed a couple of years ago. So yes, you're right, Irma. I mean, this will ultimately be called Medal of Honor Park, or if somebody wanted to offer an amendment to name it, something else. I think this name is certainly suitable and appropriate. But I think it does not raise the issue of naming a particular piece of town-owned property or facility after an individual. And I think that's what most people are concerned about.
And this idea came out of the smaller group that met? Bruce, is that what you...
We heard concerns from a lot of people about naming a specific piece of property or existing building for Herbert L. Foss or anybody else at that matter. This was strictly an effort to be inclusive in what we're trying to do and basically say, this is an honor for all Medal of Honor recipients, whether they be Herbert L. Foss or others. And the name was specifically picked for that purpose, to be inclusive.
And so to just reinforce what Greg said, they had had discussion at Advisory, and they had input from the Foss Committee, a number of members. They had input as well from the Historic Commission. And the idea was, is there a way we can proceed with this, accomplishing the initial objective and at the same time have a Medal of Honor that might accomplish others? So it was a small group of us who said, can we, now that we've got this, can we get something? And then let's bring it back to the group assembled for a resolution.
I just have a couple of other things. The, out of the original article, which seems so long ago, the word, the construction was in there as well. And I'm still of the opinion that should be in there. Well, here's my rationale. Supposedly, all the money for this is going to be raised privately.
For the construction?
Correct. I think the town needs some skin in the game, and I hope it is not going to take $40,000 to permit, and if it does, we ought to be shot.
Yeah. Let me answer that. That was lifted purposely. We had a... We had a deliberation at the Advisory Committee, and the deliberation, as you can imagine, having been on there, went from one extreme to the other. There were individuals who basically said, we as a town should not be doing the construction. This should be done by private funds. There were those that basically said, if we're really proud of this individual as a town, we ought to be footing the whole construction. So it again was somewhat purposely done to ameliate the concerns of two sides of a coin. The other part, I think, that's important is that if we're truly saying that this appropriation should be available for not only Foss, but others, then the $40,000 shouldn't be used for stuff that might be used for permitting and design for the memorial to another recipient. And if you did that, then, if you used it for construction for Foss, then there wouldn't be any funds available for design for any other memorial.
And it would be up to the committee to come back and ask for more money for the other recipients. Once a process is put in place to identify, how do you recognize a recipient who has enough Hingham ties, whatever that means?
Yep.
And since we can't get the guy back from Milton, don't think we're going to worry about him, but a process needs to be developed. The issue up front is, we've got to do something for Foss. We look pretty stupid.
Yeah.
And so I think construction ought to be back in here.
If all of us collectively agreed that some of this fund should go for construction, then we could address that.
And I'm not looking for all of it, but I think the town should have some skin in the game for construction.
But what you are likely to do is use up all the $40,000 and not have it available for anybody else. And I think that there would be some concerns and objections to that.
I think there's an opportunity, Irma, that, once we've gone through the design and permitting phase, which frankly, I really don't know how long it'll take, but I suspect it'll take close to a year, if not longer, that maybe next year, for next year's town meeting, somebody could put forth an article for the town to fund some or all of the construction. I don't think that's off the table.
And that just kicks it out another year. So we keep kicking the bucket down the road on this, and the commitment was made by the then-town administrator, I think it was 2008 or '09, somewhere in there, that we were going to name something for Foss within six months. He just didn't specify which six months. But we keep kicking this thing down the road, a year, another year, another year, and it's kind of time to stop it.
Well, I can't really disagree with your point, but I do think that this will create sufficient momentum that something will come forward. And I agree with Tom that we don't want to create a mechanism that exhausts the $40,000, and then the commitment we've made to honor the other gentleman that might be worthy is hollow. And I don't think we know enough at this point to put a dollar amount in that will fund construction. So I.
I don't disagree with that, but it's going to be something, and whatever's left of this $40,000 should go towards that.
Well.
My two cents.
Let me just comment on that, if I may. You know, maybe, Tom, in the comment, there could be a statement that, I would hope that within the next year, we establish the criteria for the others, and if a design comes forth for Seaman Foss and there's money left, it could be used. I think the concern some of the veterans have expressed to me is that they might need some seed money, if you will, to go out and raise money in this. That might be a way to incorporate your thoughts with it.
Which the original article kind of played.
Right. And this one does not.
Yeah, purposely.
Okay.
But if collectively we agree that that should be in the comment section, so be it.
Yeah, okay. Okay, you're good.
For now.
Okay. Paul?
I didn't anticipate that this would be as difficult as it's become, but I do thank Mr. Piles for his thoughtful comments, as well as the Chair of the Advisory. I think that with the commitment made by this board and by the town collectively to advance a suitable memorial, this will be further defined in the coming months, and we can build upon it at the next town meeting. So I think that that's a thoughtful rationale, and I think that that's a very sensible approach to take. And as part of this process, I think it's very important that it be transparent and inclusive, because I think that the broader the reach, the greater the enthusiasm for it, and the more likely the support will be for the whole town, or from the whole town. So those are my thoughts. I've said all this before. I'd certainly listen with great interest to anybody who's got any different views, but that's kind of where I see this going.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. Greg, I'll turn it over to you, if you'd like, before I open it to the public.
Mary, have anything? Okay, anybody from the Advisory Committee have any? Lizzie?
I'd like to ask, just in terms of clarifying things, because, you know, I was thinking about this a lot today, about each of these people, and I don't want to make a recommended motion right now, but would it be worth to clarify for the Advisory Committee to make a recommended motion saying that, that, not to go through the whole thing, but for the use of the Foss Memorial Committee in the design and permitting of a memorial park honoring past, present, and future Medal of Honor recipients of Hingham, including a memorial to Seaman, to Seaman Herbert L. Foss and/or others? So that it clarifies this to a certain thing, to a certain point, that this isn't just for Foss, that we are going to honor him, but that there may be other people involved. And in doing that, I just thought maybe, just because having researched Blackmar a little bit, I'm not sure some of our comments about Blackmar play correct, if we could just take that whole thing out and just say that there were other people identified who could potentially be, but just to keep that whole part of things out, and so that can be declared later on, that the criteria is set. Does anyone?
Well, I guess I'd be curious as to what about Mr. Blackmar is not accurate that's in the comment, because I think what's in there is fairly benign and generic.
You know, I read a bunch of things today, and I think that, you know, we don't have any criteria. And, you know, I talked to Tom, and, you know, I said, in some ways, we're kind of putting the park before the force, because we don't even have criteria yet. Yet we're saying, okay, we're going to honor Foss, but not, you know, anybody else right now. And then, but after doing that, we're going to come up with a criteria. It should be, to me, we should have done the criteria first, then said, okay, Foss. The reality is, though, is that you know Foss is going to fall behind no matter what. So in that regard, it doesn't matter. But the fact is that we don't have any criteria set yet. And I think that there will be some questions about the criteria, and I think one of them seems to be when people are making all this sort of noise about it. And don't get me wrong, because I feel like the veterans got the rug pulled out from under them, because all this stuff came up at the 11th hour. But I think that there's, citizenship is a question. And one thing that got me thinking, and I'd like the veterans, at some point, they can talk back, you know, to this, is that there are people in our ranks and their ranks who are no longer official citizens of this town, and yet they have given so much to this town and to this country, but they are not official citizens. And yet, I really feel their heart is still here, that they are still giving to this town. And so, in that regard, I think that there may be real consideration for Blackmar, and that he may not have been just a, some kind of summer home here, that he had been a lot more serious than that, given the stuff that I've read. But I think to, just to take that whole thing out, you know, just remove that from our comments and not even bring it up, and then just say, have the recommended motion include the park and the memorial to Foss, would sort of clarify things.
Yeah, I guess the only reaction I'd have is, I think if we took the references to General Blackmar out, I do believe, given the publicity that's surrounded this over the last few weeks, people will get up at town meeting and ask that question. Why have we not addressed this? And I think, so in the comment, I think we tried to preemptively acknowledge that we are aware that he had a significant relationship with the town of Hingham, and that, in due course, it may be appropriate to come up with some honor for him. And, you know, I agree with some of the tweaking you suggested to the motion may be appropriate, and we can sort of work our way through that. But I think it needs to be clear that the intent here is a park that, and I don't want to use the word generic, because I think that's offensive to the situation, but that's inclusive to everyone who has earned the recognition. But it should also be clear that there is going to be singular recognition to Seaman Foss.
Right, that's why I have it written down, including a memorial to.
Right. I just want to make sure that that's clear to everybody, and you're right, the way you had worded it, I think, is consistent with that, and that's why I said I think perhaps we can work with that. But I'm a little wary of not addressing the Blackmar issue, at least in some.
Well, we could just say he was involved in the town, and, I mean, I just, I think that some.
Well, I think, if I may, Greg, I think the intent was, the four people, those names I've heard, were not officially residents. And when you and I talked, and you said, well, I got his death notice, and it said he died in Hingham.
I know he died in Hingham, but he was a citizen.
And it said he was a citizen.
On his way out to Alaska to.
But I think that's the criteria question for those issue, because the other three members were people who served here at some point in their career, and that was, again, I just want to bring us back. The charge of the selectmen gave the original committee was to honor Foss, and it's taken us two years to get this far. Let's get Foss done. There's no question that the others need recognition, in my mind, if the town decides. That's the town's decision to make. I'm sorry, Greg, I didn't mean.
No, I'm also.
Do we have to, you know, recommend?
Well, why don't we have some further discussion, and then we can tweak the language? I mean, what you said, if you have to repeat it when we get to that point.
Like, you're going to have to write it down.
I would.
There was nothing that you said that gives me pause.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else?
Well, Ted, first.
Bruce, I guess to follow up on your point, I was not privy to the town meeting where we actually moved in, do you actually create the Foss Memorial Committee?
It wasn't a town meeting. It was a selectman.
In terms of the desert, the fact that we moved forward with this area, whether it was done in a coffee shop, town meeting, or whatever.
Wasn't done in a coffee shop.
Well, I guess my concern is that we, and I know this was discussed previously, that, you know, we're moving forward with Foss, because at the time, it was understanding that it was only Mr. Foss, Seaman Foss, who had received the Medal of Honor. And maybe just thinking to around Lizzie's point, the reason we did not have any criteria played, because there's none of the legitimate honor, and somehow, some way, shape, form, it was from Hingham, and he was the only person we were aware of. As such, I think I have concern then, in saying that, well, we said we were going to do something for Foss. I saw the Hingham Journal of Law the last week, where there was a comment mentioned that the administrator or a selectman who made a promise on behalf of the town that we were going to do this, let's put the legal issues aside as to whether or not that's binding or any way, shape, or form can be recognized. I feel like it is, once again, we're kind of choosing and picking basic factors that, you know, well, you lost a leg in this war, then you died, and then maybe it was an arm. I just think that we're making too much of the focus on Seaman Foss. And, you know, I think also, just in terms of, and I want to be clear, I grew up as a military dependent, my brother's been in the Navy for 27 years, my father was in the Air Force for 25, so I have nothing against our military, and I very much support our military. And it's hard for me even to bring up these issues. But I do think, walking into this hall, you see all the names and faces that are down there. And we created the memorial outside here without names, without distinctions there, and I think the same approach, and I think that's what we're seeing drafted up here in the revised article, is whether it's something to mention of Foss, fine, but I don't think we should be in a position of saying, well, we'll start with Foss, and then we'll work down to the others. Because I think, Irma, maybe to the same extent, if we're talking about the $40,000, how many of the folks either look at Blackmar or anybody else would say, well, how much of that are you carving out for the other recipients and not just Foss? Because if we used it up on Foss, then it's almost like you're setting precedent for them to come back and say, well, we put $40,000 aside to look at Foss, why aren't we looking at these others? Having said that, I do believe, in having read the revised proposal here, that we get more to a position of, and I agree with you, Greg, I don't want to use the word generic, but I think it's one that kind of represents all of the men and women who have, you know, put their lives, their interests for the town of Hingham at risk, and so I think we get to that point. But I do want to be clear that I don't personally feel that because something happened two years ago, and we decided to focus on Foss, that that should be our focus. Because if it was up to me, I would just strip the name out altogether, no disrespect at all to Foss. But the fact that it should be more of an approach to all of them, without distinction as to whether you died here, you summered here, you ate ice cream cones here, you played at a vintage baseball game, I don't care. And I think that's my concern in terms of where we seem to kind of make judgment calls as to, well, how much documentation do we need to find? You have death certificates, that's this, but then you have something else in terms of other documentation that we need to look at. I just think we're just creating a situation that's just, one, that we as a town should maybe debate. And I think we could get to that point if we kind of made this more of just a generic application to those who were Medal of Honor recipients, and then move forward after. So, thank you for your time.
Well, I'll just respond this way. I think you've got to think about it two ways. The park is all-inclusive. You earn the Medal of Honor, you are being recognized in the park. The recognition for Seaman Foss is unique and singular. It does not preclude recognition of anyone else. I do think to suggest that this has only been a two-year cause is not really accurate. I appreciate you being not be privy to all the details, but I've been on the Advisory Committee for six years, and we've been dealing with this in one way or another for those six years, and I'm sure it started long before then.
You did.
A gentleman's been dead for 77 years. I think there's been some discussion, one way or another, for probably the greater part of that period of time. So I personally, and I think, I don't want to speak for others, but I think others too, too, that Mr. Foss has earned the town's recognition, and this is how we're, how those of us who are supportive of this initiative think is appropriate. Again, I want to emphasize, no one is suggesting that that precludes recognition of anyone else in due time, after appropriate discussion, research, whatever is necessary to determine what somebody's ties to the town are, which is probably the criteria at some point that will determine the significance of somebody's recognition. I mean, I don't want to get into the details of it, but, you know, the three gentlemen that were in the Navy or the Marine Corps that ended up being stationed here for a number of years, certainly they deserve recognition, but not the same amount of recognition as somebody who was a longtime resident, whether they were a full-time resident or a part-time resident. You know, I think we have to be realistic about that, and I think that this proposal does that.
I would just also add that I don't think we're suggesting to honor Mr. Foss because two years ago, we said we're going to honor Mr. Foss. We're honoring Mr. Foss for the merit and the life he lived and the example that he set.
Yeah, that does, Irma would like.
I agree with Greg. We've been talking about Seaman Foss for a good 10 years that I can remember. We have made promises to his family repeatedly, and whether they're binding or not, we made them. And Hingham always lives up to their promises. I think the idea would be interesting to see what town meeting thinks of it, of a Medal of Honor park, or whatever. But I do think, the way this is written in Lizzie's recommended motion, if that goes through, we're still two years away, because there's nothing in there that says, and I like your suggestion, Bruce, somehow put seed money in there.
Right.
For starting the fundraising, because I do think the town has got to put skin in the game on this, and say, we're going to pick up a piece of the construction, and then try to do the fundraising. I just hope all this angst is not going to hurt the fundraising that's going to go on.
Good point. Okay, Greg. Lucy?
Just a question about the location of the Medal of Honor Park. We have a reference area at the waterfront now. Is this that same area, or is it between Barnes and Whitney?
It's to, I don't, I should have brought the map in that we had. It's to, I don't, I should have brought the map in that we had. It's to the, it's to the right of the Veterans', the Veterans' Park.
We still, we do have a veterans' park.
Yes, that doesn't get changed.
So now we're gonna have a Medal of Honor Park. Does that mean that if we want to honor somebody who didn't have the Medal of Honor, they would have a memorial in the veterans' park but not the Medal of Honor Park?
The chairman, I can interrupt. The correct name of the park is the POW MIA Memorial. There is no such thing as a veterans' memorial park in the town of Hingham.
Thank you, Keith. And what I'm wondering, are we naming the Medal of Honor Park in a way that excludes the possibility of recognizing someone else who's worthy?
Can I? This is about Medal of Honor winners, starting with Seaman Foss. Downstairs in the hall are other people who've received other medals. That's what they're, they, some people have floated the ideas about a memorial hall or something like that for those other recipients. That is not what's on, recognizing Silver Stars, Bronze Stars, Purple Hearts, that's not for discussion tonight. If some subsequent town meeting, in my opinion, I won't be here by then, decides to want to address and open that question, they can open that question. This is about Medal of Honor winners. And one other point, and Keith will correct me, there is a Medal of Honor Park with the names of all recipients who have received the Medal of Honor in Massachusetts. Is it in Waymouth, did you?
It's at Shea Memorial Field in Waymouth at the site of the old South Waymouth Naval Air Station upon entry of what they call, I think, South.
South Field.
Just after that sign on the right, it does list all the recipients of the Medal of Honor of those inhabitants under Mass General Law, Chapter 43, of the Congressional.
You always have the answers. I knew I went to my place. I'm sorry, Greg, I'm.
No. Anybody else from advisory?
Advisory.
Bruce, I'll go back to you.
Carol, your hand's been coming. Could you come up, please?
No, because no one else has, I'm not going to.
We have revolt. Turn off the mic.
I'm totally confused. I don't, I mean, I've been to meetings, but could you just kind of summarize?
Sure.
Because the last meeting you did talk about a march article with the park mentioned, but I'm confused about, could you summarize, like?
Sure.
What the deal is?
Sure.
As far as honoring Foss, like, how will that be done separately or?
Okay. Keep me honest, my friends to the left, the idea is to put forth and create a Medal of Honor Park in an area we discussed, down at the waterfront, adjacent to the POW MIA Memorial. And that we'd put seed money, the $40,000 would go to design and permit that park. And subsequently, if there was any money left after that permit and design, that we'd permit and design potentially a memorial to Seaman Foss to be approved by the Board of Selectmen at subsequent date. And then finally, the question of whether there should be other commemoration given in that location to other potential Medal of Honor recipients that would be subsequently decided. Is that, you got?
Because you said, $40,000 to design and permit, if there's any money left, you will potentially design something to honor Foss, so is that gonna be some money left that you won't be honoring? I don't get it. I don't get, is it gonna be single out, or is it gonna be specifically honored in this park? Can you explain that?
Yeah. We think that we won't need $40,000 to design and permit the grass field on which a memorial will sit. There is work that has to be arranged for this to be created in a fashion to create a subsequent memorial. Okay? You okay with that?
So it'll be a specific memorial, a physical memorial?
There'll be a physical park. First question you asked, is there a physical park for the Medal of Honor? And that has to be permitted first, okay? Then the next part of the action would be to take a dish, the same, from that same pot of $40,000, to prepare through the Foss Committee, a memorial and permit and design a memorial to Seaman Foss.
On that empty lot.
On that empty lot. So here's my best example, the famous Groucho Marx joke about who's buried in Grant's Tomb? Where is Grant's Tomb? Somebody had to prepare the West Side Highway to put Grant's Tomb there. That's what we're doing. We're putting, building the highway before we put Grant's Tomb there. That's how I picture it, so. And by the way, Grant is buried in Grant's Tomb. Groucho told me that. Mr. Beal, if you wouldn't mind, Bob, thank you.
You want me to face you?
They'll catch you, they can see you. Thank you.
I'm Robert Beal, 71 Elm Street. I'm a co-chairman of the Veterans Council, United States Air Force Vietnam Veteran. Took me a long time before I ever came up at any kind of a speaker and told anyone that I was a Vietnam Veteran. But it's not about me, it's about my confusion. A park, so this article, we're gonna name a piece of dirt Medal of Honor Park, and we're gonna walk away. We're gonna look at this dirt and say, that's the Medal of Honor Park, and we're gonna come back and build things on it. I don't know why, to try to follow up Irma's discussion, why this seed money that was so readily available and supported and agreed upon three, four times in the past is all of a sudden now removed because we're afraid of someone who may or may not be in the vet, who should be vetted, as Seaman Foss has been recognized and understood. Why that this creation, this article would not create the park, you know, do some landscaping, you know, put some topsoil in there, that would be the $40,000 to establish kind of a basis of, you know, an imprint, an imprimatur of the park. So that we have, you know, a sign that says Medal of Honor Park, and something where, you know, maybe a granite bench, maybe a wooden bench, you know, something from, but something there to establish the presence, maybe a flagpole, with an American flag on it that's made in USA. But I'm confused, I get frustrated with all of this other talk about things that go on that wasn't purview or privy, or the charge of what the people have been trying to do for 10 years because they recognize the person that we knew was here, family was telling us we were here. I'm not disputing anyone else about anything else, except that all came, now, since 1995, in the town, what do we call it, Whippidge? Whippidge? It says Herbert A. Foss, only Medal of Honor winner. That's been published as a public document since 1995. And these people have sat back with that information in their butt pockets, butt pockets, waiting for something to move forward, and some way to go, but damn! And then have the audacity to say that veterans are at fault. A public official, a town historian says, we are at fault for this dilemma, or this debacle, I think may have been the word. I was not here. I did not intend to speak this way. But this event is gonna stop. Herbert L. Foss deserves to be recognized regardless of who may follow behind Herbert L. Foss. And then someone came up with three additional links to the town of Hingham. Folks, it may be, there were three individuals that were earned and received, and recipients of the Medal of Honor and things they did when they were in the Marine Corps. One of those people, Mr. Pope, mentioned earlier, wanted to become a banker. Mr. Pope gave my parents their mortgage. My father walked into his office, may I see you? Come on in. My father was a Marine reservist, he knew this individual being the Medal of Honor recipient, being maybe the prominent bank of the time. My wife and I want to move out of the barracks. If you've been around a while, the barracks was veterans' housing that is now William B. Terry Drive, and it's where I grew up. They collected enough money, they saved enough money, and Mr. Pope, here you go, Mr. Beal, good luck. My parents still live in that house. So they knew, when I mentioned, my mother saw Pope, she says, he was a wonderful, wonderful man, but he's from Milton. I don't know why my mother knows it, she's not a historian. But we can't, we continue to focus on what if, what is, and we lose the recognition due and the honor presented that we have obligated ourselves to the Foss family about doing this recognition. So I think that you're tweaking, that there needs to be a park created with a name on it, with a couple of benches, to at least establish an honest park and show the town, show the people that we will do this. And the Foss Committee will come along and they would raise the money privately to build something, some structure, some plaque, something for Foss, and whoever else comes along would raise their funds. So it would be, the provisions would be, the basis is here, the park, and each person, after they're properly vetted, with an appropriate action, raise the money to honor that person too. And there may be two, and maybe more. You know, we would all hope, as veterans, that no one ever has to receive the Medal of Honor again. No one. And that's the frustration that I feel and the resolve that I do, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect.
I would dare someone to follow, Bob. He's exactly, and you had no notes. Thank you. You said it well.
That's excellent.
Well, Mr. Reardon.
So, looking around, I think I'm only, the only representative of the Foss Committee in the room. And I stand in that capacity.
Can't hear you, can't.
I'm, I said, I think I'm the only representative of the Foss Committee as currently constituted in the room. And I rise in that, in that respect, because this is ultimately a directive to the Foss Committee. And there are a number of things that I just want to be clear. It's a little bit like the press asking their questions. So I want to first say, I think there's been an enormous amount of effort in response to an enormous amount of frustration evidenced by the veterans who've worked on this long and hard. Some know that I was named to this committee unbeknownst to me. I was 3,000 miles away. I did agree to stand because I care deeply about the harbor. I am a Navy veteran, service during the Vietnam War. I care about how veterans are treated in this town. I care deeply about the harbor because I grew up on the harbor and I plan to live in the harbor, as they say, until I leave it in a box. The address is Steamboat Lane. Bill Reardon. So I want to commend the compromise, because I think it is a compromise in many respects. I think it does a number of things. It, I think, narrows the scope of the naming, whether we're calling it the Medal of Honor naming or the Foss naming. It narrows it to something that many people in the town, I think, will be able to comprehend and deal with and address. And it acknowledges the rest of the history of our harbor, which we did not want to overlay with something called, you know, the Foss Harbor Front. I personally did not, I felt that was inappropriate. So I think this compromise to get it to a location, and I'm gonna be very specific, the location I believe we're talking about now, different from earlier, is the old mobile station. Am I correct?
No. No.
Okay. Well, there are two parcels, and right now, the line of trees separates what was the old mobile station that was acquired, and I know this because I was the chairman of the CPC when we acquired it. And the land to the left of that line of trees was previously owned by the town. It was acquired as part of an exchange between a, I think it was a Dodge dealership, and, you know, we got that town, town land earlier. That's when, Bob, the POW MIA was.
The POW MIA is not part of the O'Brien swamp.
Okay.
The POW MIA is under the Conservation Commission, it was, it was, got with Conservation Grants.
And that's, you answered a question earlier, Mr. Ruffo, Bruce, that, you know, this was a selectman's parcel. It's the mobile station that is a selectman's parcel. These other parcels are subject to other jurisdictions. So I'm trying to be clear, because I think everybody wants to know this, but I think that's what we're talking about here. And if we're not, so we need to clarify that. The question of naming or not, Tom has, I think, been very articulate in terms of saying, look, we're trying to move this forward by moving away from the strictures of the naming article that we have created in the town, and we want to be careful about it. This is the first, well, it won't be the first application of the naming article if it's not deemed to be a naming article. But I'm a little puzzled, because the question of whether, I think, I tried to look in my notes, because I had a copy of the statute, and I thought it said, land or a structure. Now, a building clearly would be a naming. I don't know whether some of the designs being discussed would constitute a structure and therefore would be a naming, so that if we are going on to a memorial that would be a structure, then it would be a naming. And I'm just a little unclear on that point.
It's not a structure.
I don't think we know, is the.
No, we don't, we don't.
Until it becomes a structure, perhaps, we don't know whether we have a naming.
When it becomes a structure, my friend in the back there is gonna hear from us.
Okay. So the other observations I would have, and again, I'm speaking because I'm imagining this Foss Committee now to be nine members, and that will be an interesting dynamic, nine people trying to deal with all this.
Talk to the 15 people from advisory.
I, having served on advisory for five good years, I know the process. But it does strike me that if we are, we talk about the design of the Foss Memorial, but it strikes me that if we are naming, if we are designating this parcel as Medal of Honor Park, then the first thing that, from a planning and from a design perspective, you're going to need to do is to say, well, all right, we want a park that could accommodate several different memorials. And I just, I think it's gonna be hard for the committee, of which I am a member, to design a memorial without a context. So I feel as if the Foss Committee and/or others are going to have to kind of deal with the space. I mean, you, my wife was a landscape designer. You start with, what's the, you know, what's the, what's the space that we've got and how might we use that space over time? So that, that dynamic, that disparity.
Okay.
And then last, last point, and then I'll sit down and let you, the last is the question that I believe, not the comment, but the, I'm sorry, not the article, but the comment suggests, is that it will be the, one of the tasks of the committee to develop criteria for recognition of future, of other Medal of Honor winners in addition to Seaman Foss. And I guess I, I'm questioning whether that's a Foss Committee responsibility or whether that's a selectman responsibility, perhaps together with the Foss Committee. I want to be sure that the Foss Committee, as directed, is clear on what its, what its mission is. So with all of those thoughts, and I, apologies for adding perhaps a few complexities, but when we're done with all this, after April 29th or 30th, I think we want to, we're all trying to get to something that moves us forward. I think everybody has said that, and I raise these points in the interest of hoping that we can accomplish that.
Okay. Let me get to your third question, because I remember that.
That's what I was gonna answer.
The third question is, I can show you on a map the parcel of land that we have discussed, the three of us discussed as a suggestion. And we checked with the town administrator, and he said, it's ours. So.
Selectmen's.
Selectmen's. So that's issue number one. The instructions to the committee, I would think, I know my colleagues, I won't be here, but my colleagues will want to be involved, and whoever replaces me, in the criteria discussion. I think our intent was to give it to the people who spent the most time at this, and that's Foss, the Foss Committee, and let them discuss the criteria, because they are the ones who came and gave me all the research on the other people. So they can decide what that would be, and then they would bring it to the Board of Selectmen for approval. On the design question, my colleague to my left here is, he has worked with processes in planning that go through, how do you do the planning and design? And, you know, the model they've used is 25, 50, 75. I don't know that it needs that particular, but that's a suggestion. That would be discussed with the committee to decide. The issue at hand is, before this goes too much further, to come back to the Board of Selectmen on the approval. So that the Board of Selectmen would be. on the approval, so that the Board of Selectmen would be actively involved in this. And let's see, was there one other point on the other members? We answered that question. Is there anything I missed, Bill, from your notes? I just...
Let me just weigh in on the last one. And this was my language. The intent that I had was for the Foss Committee, because of their experience, to come up with recommendations for criteria. It is the Board of Selectmen who would actually make that determination.
Thank you.
That's what I might have expected, and I value that clarification.
Yes.
If the selectmen agree.
Yes, I do, I do too. But you've only got 32 days of my agreement.
I will relook at the comments, but that was the intent.
I'd like to make a comment on the criteria. I certainly think the Foss Committee has a great role to play there, but I believe the Veterans Council, who can more probably identify Medal of Honor recipients and the criteria for who fits and not, excuse me, with the help of the Historical Commission. They've done some very great work and have contributed to this town over the years, both of our Historical Commission, Historic Districts Commission. Try and say that five times fast. I think between those three groups, but I very strongly feel the veterans have got to take the lead on this.
I would assume that the committee, when they're thinking about this part of the charge, would certainly get the advice of the Veterans Council as well.
I hope so. Yep. Okay, all right. Any, Greg, any?
Anybody else?
No.
All right. To my colleagues, we, Betty, do you have the language for the article? That doesn't have...
The warrant you just signed? If I may have the warrant.
The real warrant.
Yep. The real warrant. The real. Is that your picture on the warrant?
Before we kick this thing down the road again, can we go back to Bob's point about, can we get something done this year? Because we're going to, this is two years before we ever see anything for Foss. And the way the warrant article is written now, the money can't be spent for doing. We're going to ponder and permit and wander and draw and redraw, and how do we fix that? So we have some...
A construction idea.
Yes, and if nobody, if the word "construction" bothers people, let's come up with another word.
On site development.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead.
Paul has a thought. In 1942, the Hingham Shipyard was constructed, up and running, within months. And in the three years that it was in operation, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 227 ships were launched. It fell into a period of dormancy after the war, and until the late 1990s, it really was a visual blight. A developer came in. Fortunately, we were lucky enough to have a developer that respected the historical significance of that project. And in the 10 years that the Planning Board and the ZBA spent working on it, part of the presentation that the town now sees before it is the historical iteration, the contributions of the workforce of that shipyard. Those plaques, paid for by the developer, that you can walk and get your walking tour, they're $15,000 apiece. The gatehouse was rebuilt totally. You see a series of flagpoles there. The CVS store was concerned that it couldn't properly respect the flag etiquette, so it donated sufficient funds for a new flagpole to be placed at the GAR Hall, which is there today. My point is this, yeah, we could do something in a year, but if it takes longer to do it right, I'm all for that. And I think that we took the time in the shipyard, we worked very, very hard. I got so sick and tired of seeing Latin scribble on plaques that I knew contained substantive information for us to enjoy, but I was patient. And I think that that patience paid off with what we have down there today. And I think that the harbor is such a significant asset that we owe it to ourselves as a people to do this deliberately and properly, honorably and respectfully. We can do this, we can do this. We just need to be patient. And, you know, the whole idea of trying to figure out what the design should look like without knowing what the design is, this is what the committee's task will be. It will reach out to the veterans, it will reach out to the Planning Board, to the harbor development, to the HDIC. That's the whole idea behind this, so that what goes in there, and something will go in there, ladies and gentlemen, will successfully integrate itself to whatever else is going on in the harbor. There is intense interest in the harbor, whether it's the boating, whether it's the use of the boat ramp, the passive enjoyment that people like myself who aren't boaters get just looking out, or the boaters, the swimmers. We want to build something that not only honors Seaman Foss and any other individual that, in the view of the town, is appropriate to recognize down there. We want to build something that has a ripple effect, that brings people in, that draws them, and it becomes an enthusiastic point of our history. And I just think that if we do this deliberately and carefully, this is going to be a great tribute. And this will be the kind of tribute that the Foss family and anybody else who's recognized down there will truly appreciate, and will endure and will last, and will show, not only to the veterans community here, but to every one of us, that this is something that counts, and this is something that means something to this town.
Mr. Beal?
If I may, just one more point, just to try to clarify some of this stuff. Wilman Blackmer was a lieutenant the day of his battle at Five Forks. He was promoted in the battlefield to captain. So he was a captain in the Union Army. His rank is captain. He gained a fraternal rank in the GAR as general because he was in charge of a fraternal organization. So let's please qualify, correct military ranks, because that gets to be confusing. When you read a lot of the Blackmer stuff, it goes back and forth between captain, general, general, captain, captain, general. There's a lot of anecdotal conversations in there to go on, but he was a captain. So let's please, associated with the Medal of Honor that he so proudly received in 1897. And it is also too, from what I have read, we understand he may have left his summer home bed with the flu or some other kind of disease of the 1900s, early 1900s, and horse and buggyed out to, or train probably, out to Boise, Idaho, where the national conference is going on, and he died in Boise, Idaho. So that's really, I think, his way to that conference.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Okay. He was revered by George Custer, too. Let me, we have one issue to resolve, and that's the issue that came up in the early part. The issue of, in the comment, my suggestion, I don't know if my colleagues agree, but we put some words in regarding construction, potential use for construction. Because from what I'm told by a brief conversation, you know, that it could be used, so we don't, if we do make progress, and Paul's comments, we were patient about getting there, but goodness gracious, I would like to go to it before I die.
Me too.
And, but I want it done right. Paul makes a good point. We got to do it right. It's taken certainly long enough to do this, but, so if, I would suggest in the comment, if that's appropriate, to make reference to it. Otherwise, we got to redo the article, and here we go again. I think that's the easiest way to solve it, if you agree, if my colleagues agree. Justice.
Is there some way to play on your suggestion of seed money in the recommended motion?
We could, there's 15 of us.
I understand.
I cannot commit for 15.
I understand.
Okay, okay.
But I understand, and we will take that into consideration.
Okay. I think the only technical question left is, we have not officially voted the article.
That's correct.
Is that right?
I have no idea. We voted this thing so many times, I'm not sure what we voted. This is what, Betty, it doesn't have seed money in there?
No, but it, no, it's going to be in the comment, the seed money, all right?
Or in the recommended motion.
Or in the recommended.
Or in the recommended motion, yeah. They need, we need to officially vote it, so...
Again.
Right. A new one, or?
No, they're going to vote what they have, and then we'll...
A slightly modified one, I think.
We can amend the recommendation.
That is the way you voted to insert it in the article. You have not made your recommendation on the article that you inserted two weeks ago.
I'm so confused. Can I come back to advisory? So much easier there. Shall I try this one?
Sure, go ahead.
All right. Make a motion that the town raise and appropriate, that's, no, raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money for the use of the Foss Memorial Committee in the design and permitting of a memorial to Seaman Herbert El Foss and/or others to be constructed at a Medal of Honor Park or act on anything related thereto. The design shall be subject to final review and approval by the Board of Selectmen.
That's what I remember. Second, second.
That was the article we...
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right. I'm going to look for the words, "seed money."
Here's 15 of us.
Guys, "seed money," it's little.
Yeah, should we go back to our...
Yeah, I mean, I think we have other business, and... We have other business, and we're going to be here for a while, so...
Yeah, we'll come back.
I'm taking breakfast orders.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you, all, and thank you for your active participation.
Well, Bob Beal's right.
No, he was. Okay. Did you see that? Okay.
Put it here.
I got it, I got it here someplace. There, it's somewhere. All right, thanks. Okay, we have one other. I have, before, before we adjourn the selectmen, in the interest of the hour, I'll take a bye on selectmen reports, if that's okay with my colleagues. I just wanted to announce to the public as a reminder that April 15th, here at the Sanborn Auditorium, at 7:00, we will have what John Walsh of Aquarian Water and I are calling an information session, where relative to the article proposing, being proposed by the Board of Selectmen for town meeting, Aquarian will do their discussion of their view of the article and the situation, and we will have that information session open to the public. We have invited and received responses from the towns of Hull and Cohasset, so they'll be present in that, at that meeting. And we'll have a format with a moderator, the moderator yet to be determined, and the meeting is scheduled for 7:00 on the 15th, and it should be over hopefully by 11:00. So, what?
Is this a station?
What? At Sanborn Auditorium.
Here.
Here.
It wasn't available before.
We, no, we took care of that.
That's going to be from today?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yep, yeah, we, that's why I said to you last week, Carol, town hall only, we were trying to figure out what we could do. Okay, so keep that on your calendars, all right? We need to adjourn for an executive session, not to return for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to a real estate negotiation and negotiations with non-union personnel because discussion of these manners in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town.
Aye.
Aye, Mr. Ruffo, aye. We thank you all, we will see you, we may not see you next week. We, that agenda is still in, being developed there. So with that, have a good evening. Oh, sure, you can have your folder back. Thanks, okay, thank you.